Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. If you would all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kim, could you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Item number three is agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
None from staff, Your Honor.
All right. Seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That moves us right into public communications. We have one proclamation this evening. Ms. Gwen, if you'd like to join us up at the podium, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. We'll do a picture and then have you say a few words about the event. All right, the proclamation is for Juneteenth, 2024. Whereas, on New Year's Day, January 1st, 1863, using his war powers as president, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then, thenceforth, and forever free. And whereas, almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery. And whereas, the story and influence of James Edward Shepperson, who settled in Roslin, Washington in 1888, inspired many others to flee the South at great risk and pursue new opportunities in Washington State as miners. And whereas, we think about the moment in 1888 when 300 black men from Virginia, North Carolina, and Kentucky were determined to escape the terrorism of the post-Civil War South as they boarded trains for the Washington Territory and settled in King County mining camps. And whereas Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings. And whereas we acknowledge black freedom and achievements within this community, we would specifically like to recognize and offer thanks to the Kent Black Action Commission for their founding and continued work in the observance of Juneteenth and are grateful for their contributions to our city. And whereas we appreciate the black experience and celebrate the inclusion of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities, and whereas we commit to working together to achieve equity for all, now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2024, to be Juneteenth, 2024, in the city of Kent, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this celebration. Should we do a quick picture?
Yes.
Okay. I think they're going to want us to step over there. I'm looking at the photo takers.
You want me to say something now?
Let's do the picture and I will leave you to... Come on, let's do this first.
Okay. And I'd like to have my cohort. Absolutely. Does a lot for this experience of ours. Show our new signage and all that. So if you see these signs around, this is something new for us this year. And we thank you.
All right. As usual, it's an honor and a privilege to be here to speak for the black community here in the city of Kent and for this occasion that we celebrate Juneteenth. Juneteenth is a time when we can come together as a community to make sure we give honor and homage to our ancestors. And because of the trials and tribulations that they went through in their lives, we still, in a lot of different ways, feel that pain and that tragedy. So we are grateful that the city of Kent is acknowledging us with not only the proclamation, but in joining with us to get our celebration done. Grateful that we will have representation from the police department, from the parks department, from human services, and am I missing one?
Economic and community development.
Development or something like that. Yeah. So I hope that you guys can come and enjoy with us. We're expecting the Buffalo Soldiers. They're going to lead us in our welcome and procession, and that's going to be fun for the kids, for pictures, and some rides and stuff like that. But mostly, I just want to say thank you to everyone who takes time to come and be a part. And when I say everyone, everyone is invited to come and enjoy the great times, the great music, the great food. And we will this year have some African presentations. We've got a lot of Jolof rice coming, so I'm hoping that you can come and enjoy that with us and have a great time. As usual, I have some little buttons here. If you want to share them, you can. And all they do, they have little things about Juneteenth on these little tiny buttons. So I'll let it start over here with Tony. Thank you guys so much, and happy Juneteenth, everybody.
Very much looking forward to the celebration on Saturday.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move on. Next item on our agenda is community events. Council President Corr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have... So Sherwood Center has events happening constantly, and they actually recently just had graduations. They completed 24 graduations from surrounding areas with over 100,000 students and families to downtown Kent. So congratulations to Class of 2024. With that, on August 17th, they have Lamb of God and Master Don. September 8th, they have Marka Rajestrada goat tour. And then our ice hockey starts on September 28th, and that is all I have for events. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to talk about our Kent Summer Concert Series, which runs July 10 through August 21st. It kicks off with a magician show. So on West Benwick Park, up on Reef Road, there are concerts that are geared toward our younger population. So if you have kids, or if you're young at heart, come on down. These are free concerts. And the first one is going to be Roberto the Magnificent. And so on Wednesdays, partnering with Kent Station, the first act, the first concert is going to be Darren Motamady, well-known jazz musician who plays here and around the world, former teacher in the district. And that happens Wednesday evenings at Kent Station. Darren Motamady is just the first one. Thursdays, you can go over to Lake Meridian in the evening, 7:00 PM. Good music up there, all sorts of good music. The first one is Good Co. That's the first concert. But with both the after, the two evening ones, there's all kinds of music. You can look at the schedule, you can hear funk, jazz, pop, R&B, Scottish music, Irish music, country, different styles of country. So just all sorts of stuff. Good music, all free. So go check it out.
All right. Next item on our agenda is our Public Safety Report, and Chief Padilla is going to join us.
All right. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Ralph and members of city councils. My pleasure to bring tonight's Public Safety Report to you. Quick TV note, the Mariners did win eight to five, in case anybody was wondering. All right. Well, let's start off with some good news. We would like to start by calling up Officer Ryan Husby. We will be swearing him in tonight. So come on up. He graduated last week from the academy, was his academy class president. If you notice, we're doing onesies and twosies now instead of the nine, 10, 11 we were doing, because we've caught up with hiring. So I want to introduce Ryan and talk to you a little bit about him. He was born in Botho, but grew up in Newport Hills, attended Hazen High School in Renton, then attended Washington State University in Pullman, receiving his degree in history and criminal justice, graduating with the magna cum laude. Prior to Kent, he attended, like I said, Wazoo, and then ran his own car detailing business and worked for a variety of retail jobs. When he decided to choose Kent, the reason he gave was he was looking for a dynamic career that will allow him to stay active, both mentally and physically, while allowing him to serve the community to make a positive impact. We asked him to share something notable or interesting about himself, and he said that while he was at Wazoo, he was part of the police cadet internship program there, which is a pretty intense program. We've actually recruited several officers from that program. They do a good job there. And was voted the 2022 and through 23 Cadet of the Year. He earned this honor for his contributions to the program, as well as the two lifesaving awards he won that year during that time. Ryan also enjoys hiking, swimming, and learning about history. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Ryan Husby. Mayor Ralph, would you please do the honors?
Please raise your right hand and your feet after me. I state your name.
Oh, thank you.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America, the state of Washington, and the city of Kent. That I will uphold the Constitution and laws
I will uphold the Constitution and the laws
of the United States
The United States
and the state of Washington
and the state of Washington.
And that I will bear... Sorry. And that I will obey the rules and regulations
I will obey the rules and regulations
of the Kent Police Department. It's official. Sign the certificate.
Yeah, I would just like to recognize my mom. She's been with me. She's supported my career this entire time. When I was actually younger, I was part of the King County Explorer Program. And I remember she would have to drive me to meetings. I was 14, 15. So she's just been along with me this entire journey, and finally it's here. So I just want to give thanks to her.
Congratulations.
I do a call and give you a bump.
All right. Congratulations, Ryan. All right. More good stuff. Last week, the Washington State Patrol took the time to honor several of our officers for the actions they took back on February 16th. If you remember, we averted tragedy that night barely, when Trooper Raymond Seberg was in our town attempting to stop a DUI suspect and was shot nine times in that encounter. Officers DeVar, Bertolacci, and Cannon Officer Fleischer received recognition for lifesaving efforts to save Trooper Seberg's life and the medical aid they provided him immediately during the scene. And for tracking down the suspect, we did take the suspect in custody on his awaiting trial. Sergeant Matt Levi was the supervisor in charge. He received a commendation for running a very complex and confusing scene, making sure the resources were brought in. Anytime we have an incident like this, multiple agencies from the region respond, and somebody has to coordinate all those incoming emergency responders. He was there and did a very good job. And then Detectives DeVorek, Yagi, and Brendaberry responded to call out and handle the investigation, which, like I said, resulted in us making an arrest and filing the cases with the King County Prosecutor's Office. So very proud of what they did ultimately. You know, we averted tragedy, like I said, but Trooper Seberg is alive today. He's recovering. It's going to be a long recovery, and I'm very proud that we were able to be there to lend assistance to WSB in their time of need. So great job. And do want to note and thank Trooper Seberg and his family. He was out there in our city trying to help stop a DUI driver and actually, you know, was willing to make a sacrifice, but thankfully he didn't have to. So very good news on that. It's the picture of the ceremony at the end there. This room was filled much like it is right now for that. It was pretty good to see. All right, transitioning to kind of more, you know, I guess somber and serious discussion. Want to provide an update on the King County shots fired data. This first slide is a comparison of 2022 to the totals for 2023. Just as a reminder, the shots fired data are all the incidents in which we have verified that someone has a shotgun, hit damaged property, injured people, and/or killed people. So there's a lot of data there. If you look, in '22, just over 1,600 incidents, we increased slightly by 3% in '23. Remember that '22 was the start of our historically high numbers. That's where we really saw the apex of the numbers during the pandemic and whatnot. And then victims, 440 to 470, it's an 8% increase. And these are countywide numbers. So all the cities and unincorporated area in King County. Non-fatal injuries means that someone was hit but did not die as a result of being shot. That went up by 3%. I don't know why I have an extra percent sign there. That's a typo. And then fatalities unfortunately increased by 23% over the years prior. Looking at where we are today, these numbers are good through May of this year. So we are still seeing a rise in total incidents. We're seeing a rise in total victims. Non-fadals are up, so people are surviving at a bigger rate, but the number of people hit is higher. And fortunately, we saw some minor decrease in the fatalities. It's a modest decrease, but at this point, we'll take anything we can get. And as a source, if you want to look it up, it's on King County's website under the shots fired data. So what do we look like here in Kent? So this is our 2023 total verified shootings on the left. I know that's hard to make out. It's a lot of detail for a first slide. But ultimately, there, we saw a decrease in '23 from 176 shootings down to 159. So we've made some progress. But again, when you factor in these are historically high numbers, I'm not wanting to kid anybody. We have a lot of work to do still, but I'll take every, any bit of progress we can. We also had a high number of homicides in '23, as you see up there, 13, that involved firearms. And then injuries came down, property damage went down, and overall total numbers went down. So some progress there. More work to do. In terms of our homicides, I wanted to give a quick update on that, because I think that's one of the major areas of our focus where we've put a lot of resources in. By this time last year, we had nine homicides. We have four confirmed homicides, with the most recent one being June 3rd at Campus Park involving the Kent Meridian student who was tragically shot. We had one shooting that was a drive-by. Both the shooter and the victim were juveniles, and we have the juvenile in custody for that. We had the shooting at the Metro Bus Stop on Gow Street in Central Ave. This is one where we believe was, is a self-defense case. Charges are not filed in that case, and we don't anticipate filing charges on that. We had the shooting that was at Meeker Bar and Grill not that long ago, and we have that suspect in custody on $2 million bail. So four cases, three of them solved. Something remarkable to note is that two of the four homicides we've had this year involve juvenile shooters. And that's not a good trend. We're going to talk more about juvenile crime coming up here. A bit of good news. If you didn't realize, it takes years to bring these cases to trial. We're currently doing 2021 cases for murder trial in King County Superior Court. We've had two outcomes here recently, and we've got convictions on both. The first defendant was sentenced to 38 years, being convicted for murder two, for doing a drive-by shooting, and two counts of unlawful possession of firearm. The other case that we had, we also received a guilty plea for murder, which is unusual. That defendant got 30 years for first-degree murder, assault four, and two counts of unlawful possession of firearm. So both these cases represent a conclusion to some incredible work, large efforts by the entire department, total team effort in that regard. What's notable is that in these cases, the victims' families are allowed to make statements regarding sentencing and impact. It's called impact statements. Both the families in different cases took the time to recognize the efforts of our department and thanking us for bringing some justice and peace to the family as a result of the work. So there's that. More to come on that. I don't want to jinx anything, but right now we're trending at a good reduced rate of homicides in particular in our city. Let's hope we keep that up. Other crime stats to cover. If you guys remember this slide from parts of last year, I do this twice a year. Usually that thing is dripping with red, and there are some colors that are denoted there and decreases in black. So again, some modest progress being made. We see reductions in robberies, vehicle prowls, vehicle thefts, residential burgs, and commercial burgs haven't changed. The two items in red, aggravated assaults generally mean that there's a weapon involved. For us, that usually means it's a firearm. And then shootings are up significantly, and homicides are down. That's not on this list here. So the numbers you see there, the first column where it says percentage change, that's just a number versus We've backfilled the majority of our specialty positions. We backfilled the majority of our detective positions and having the resources to be out there, not only to respond to the calls quicker, but to prevent crime and investigate, is really starting to pay off. And so this is where I put in my shameless plug that says, imagine what we could do if I had 34 more officers. So there's that. And I want to acknowledge now this happens without the hard work of the women and men of our department and not just the officers, but our professional support staff behind the scenes, our evidence techs, our records, our jail staff. So good stuff there. Now for not great news. So we have been watching for a couple of years now our juvenile crime data. Many of you may have seen reports about the significant increase this region is seeing, not just Kent, but all over the place, of crimes committed by juveniles. Just last night, if you saw our social media, we had a 16-year-old flee from one of our officers in a stolen vehicle. The officer did not pursue because the traffic was heavy at the time. We looked at the risk to the community and we decided not to pursue. That did not stop the team from continually drive at a high rate of speed and ultimately coming to a crash, flipping the car at the intersection of 116th and Southeast 256. In flipping the car, that vehicle collided with two bystander cars. Two people in one of the bystander cars were significantly injured, one critically injured 18-year-old female that are at the hospital right now. The suspect was able to somehow get out of the car, but he didn't make it very far. We arrested him and the passenger in the stolen car was apparently not wearing a seatbelt at the time, was ejected from the car, and the stolen car partially landed on him. So it's an 18-year-old and a 16-year-old. So he's in critical status right now at the hospital, as is the suspect. We do anticipate charges for vehicle homicide and a litany of other things, including stolen vehicle. So I use that point just to illustrate that unfortunately, we are seeing an increase, a steady increase now for two years in crimes related to juveniles. So this is not just a recent occurrence. We've been kind of taking a slow march to this situation. I also want to note in fairness, because I think people may not fully understand, while the police department, a city entity, conducts the investigation and makes the arrests, those cases are referred over to the King County juvenile justice system. So they are tried by King County prosecutors, they are adjudicated by King County court judges, and they are incarcerated in the King County detention facility. All of those government entities are regulated by state law, King County ordinance, and administrative policies of the King County government. So I say that to say, this body of elected officials, the mayor, and our prosecution judges do not have control of the outcomes of these cases. And I just want to put that out there very clearly. So going through the slide, I know it's hard to see those numbers. Lot of red on the right, red is recognized as increase, right? Homicides, we had zero homicides in '21 and four this last year. And we have two already this year involving juvenile offenders. What's up there are the juveniles involved in crime. I have another chart that I didn't bring for the sake of time that outlines our number of arrests. Our numbers correspond. We have triple-digit increases in arrests for a lot of these crimes as well. So I think it's important to note, we are arresting more youth. That's not a positive brag thing. That's a, there is more arrests occurring, yet we're still seeing an increase in crime on top of that, is the note there. Particular concern firearm shootings went up with 221% since 2021 and crimes including possession of weapons, possession of firearm, possession of stolen vehicle, and eluding police, which means they flee in a stolen vehicle. Usually, those are up, all up over 300% in two years. Okay? That's huge. I note those three crimes because all three of those crimes with high-frequency impact bystanders and injure other people. And so those are big deals. A stolen car is very rarely just a stolen car. So in summary, we've experienced a 73% increase in juvenile crimes between 2021 and 2023. So in looking at this as your police chief and trying to figure out, you know, strategies, what we can do, I want to assure everybody, we are leveraging everything we can to make a difference here. We've partnered with several organizations. I'm part of a regional group, as is the mayor for gun crime reduction. We've been working with some of the community navigators, so we're doing everything we can. But a lot of this is beyond our control. So I think it's important to look at and ask legitimate questions. I think our community has a right to know answers to some serious questions. I think it's right as government officials to be prepared to answer, is what we're doing working? Right? Is it working? And if not, what needs to be changed? So pretty simple, straightforward leadership questions that should be asked and accepted. And so looking at that, some of the immediate questions that come to mind are, you know, without accountability and consequences for committing crime, should we expect change in the behavior of our youth? Should we? Is the juvenile diversion program working? And how do we know? Right? Where's the data for that? When a team commits a violent crime like doing a drive-by or armed robbery with a gun, is placing an ankle monitor on them and then sending them home to their parents the right course of action by our judges in King County? And when our judges make those decisions to release violent juvenile offenders back into the community, are they giving adequate weight to their obligation to consider the public impact of their decisions, the public safety impact? What are the unintended messages that are being sent out when we say things like, we're going to close the detention center by 2025 and have zero incarcerated youth? Are there state laws like the one that requires a juvenile to have four prior arrests for unlawful gun possession, four, before they can be incarcerated on their fifth? And that means if they bring a gun to school four times before they can be admitted into detention. Is that law adequate? Is it in line what we think serves and promotes public safety? Because that is the law. And these are just some of the questions we have to address before we're going to see any changes here. I do want to note that recently in a letter to chiefs and mayors, King County Prosecutor Lisa Mannion acknowledged the issue, laid out her plan for what her team is doing. And in her letter, she is quoted as saying, "I also do not believe that eliminating juvenile detention center by 2025 is attainable, achievable. Unfortunately, we have juveniles who commit serious violent crimes. The community is deserving of a respite from their behavior and it is appropriate to hold these individuals in a secure and therapeutic environment." End quote. And that, we received this later, I think a couple of weeks ago. You know, I agree with this statement. We're always going to need a secure place to hold violent offenders and at least interrupt their ability to hurt other people. And there's no getting around that. We have a system, we have to have a system that balances public safety through accountability and the restorative measure for our youth. There has to be a balance of both. And so I leave that kind of as an open comment. So this comes with the disclaimer of don't kill the messenger, okay? So 4th of July, just a reminder for everybody. All personal forms of fireworks are illegal in the city of Kent. Okay? They have been since 2015 when Kent voters approved an initiative under Advisory Proposition 1 that made, that resulted in our city code 13.05, which now bans fireworks. Okay? We are asking that you not call 911 to report firework complaints unless they are in imminent danger to public safety. Otherwise, we'd ask that you call that number there, the non-emergency line, 253-852-2121, and report your violations there. Just a reminder that because we have stabilized our staffing, we will be fielding fireworks emphasis teams this year. They will be out and we are going to be in better position to keep up with the hundreds of complaints that we will receive on the 4th of July, I assure you. We will not get to all of them, but I'm subtly suggesting that you are at a higher risk of getting a ticket this year than you have been in past years. Violations for fireworks, banned violations range from a civil infraction of $250 and then for more serious violations of the law, you could be charged with a gross misdemeanor punishable with 364 days in jail up to, and up to a $5,000 fine. Okay? So, and also at any time, whether you get arrested or cited, officers have the lawful authority to seize unlawful fireworks, which is all of them. So we'll be doing that. Bottom line is, we don't want to give tickets and arrest people on the 4th of July. That's not what we want to do. And so we are seeking voluntary compliance from everybody to make sure we're in compliance with the law and we make the holiday something that's safe for everybody involved. So there's that. And I really hope there's no questions for that. And as an alternative to personal fireworks, the city is once again hosting the Splash Event at Lake Meridian. That event is going to start at 5:00 PM and run to 10:00 PM, depending on the time needed for darkness to run the show. Park gates do not open till 3:00 PM and we are only allowing drop-off only because we overload that parking lot and we have issues with emergency vehicles. So show up at 3:00, drop off, and then take a shuttle back to the facility. There'll be shuttle buses running from nearby locations. There will be live music throughout the event, which is always nice, and the fireworks display starts at 10:00 PM. Shuttle service starts at 5:00 and goes to after the fireworks. And once the show is done, we will be escorting everybody out and locking the gates at midnight to shut down the show. And then last on my list for tonight, I wanted to put in a early reminder about this year's National Night Event, which will be held on Tuesday, August 6th. Registration for neighborhoods that want to participate is open. Go to our website and find the community education button and scroll down to the tab on National Night Out. You'll have all the information there. If you want police officers or staff to come out to your event, you have to register. That's how we know where to go. And for those that have not participated in the past, this is a great opportunity to gather your neighbors, share great food, and have police, city staff, firefighters, and our elected officials, which all of them every year, come out and support this and talk about what's going on in your neighborhoods, talk about what's going on in your community, and develop those relationships. So looking forward very much to that. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'll take any questions we have.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Michaux.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for this presentation. It was very insightful. I'm wondering if you have any updates that you can share with us about the Campus Park homicide?
I have to be careful. The answer, what I'll say is that we have strong information as to why that act happened. I can confirm that it was not a random encounter and I can also confirm that we have very strong leads and I feel cautiously optimistic that we will solve this. Hopefully that was enough, sorry.
Any other questions for the chief? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to reports.[1423.71][1423.71][applause] I think that's a first.[1425.71][1425.71][laughter] We are going to move on to reports, opportunity to hear from everyone up at the dais about the work that they are doing to represent the city of Kent outside of our regularly scheduled council meetings. I have to say, I am very, very grateful for each of our council members that not only takes on these meetings, but makes sure that our voice is being heard in those regional conversations. I have a couple of updates from boards that I sit on. The first one, Transportation Policy Board at Puget Sound Regional Council, I do chair that board. We had two presentations at our meeting last week. First one on financial strategies for our regional transportation plan. As you can imagine, when you look at the four county region, the number of transportation projects needed to keep everyone moving, including bridges, road repair and maintenance, and then expansion of our system, we are talking about billions and billions of dollars. So we had conversations around how exactly we plan, looking out long into the future, how those projects are to be paid for. The second presentation we had was on the regional safety plan. So council, you have all heard about the safety plan that we're doing here in the city. That is funded through a grant from PSRC and at the same time that individual cities are doing those safety plans, road safety plans, the region is doing one as well. A lot of stark data around very serious and fatal crashes. They have gone up exponentially. Things are not moving in the right direction. Conversation centers around what are the engineering-type things that we can fix, but then also what are the behavior issues that are leading to this? So one of the things I continue to push for at that board is a really honest conversation. There are things that we can engineer and there are simply behaviors, speeding, ignoring traffic signals, those kinds of things that will continue to drive up those serious accidents. So we need to be honest with ourselves as we develop those plans and know that, like I said, that there are things that we can engineer and there are things that we really have to work on education and enforcement around. We had our Regional Policy Committee meeting last week as well. We passed out what is the final, final version of the Crisis Center implementation plan. The county had some requests for changes to the one that was passed out at the last RPC meeting specifically surrounding the county's ability to purchase a facility for a crisis care center. The plan is really predicated on private organizations or nonprofits purchasing those facilities and operating them, but if a situation arises where there's a building that is appropriate and there's not a provider that has been chosen, that the county does have the ability to step in along with that jurisdiction and purchase the facility and then look for a provider. So that plan passed out in its final version last week. Final meeting, skip, our South King County Housing and Homelessness Partnership. I'm the vice chair of that group. We had a presentation from a consultant organization that does consulting to low-income and affordable housing developers. So talking about all of the things that go into putting the funding together for those projects, citing locations, all of those kinds of things. Very interesting presentation. The last time we had this gentleman come was a couple of years ago and it was before Skip had put together its capital plan. And so he had a lot of complimentary things to say about that capital plan, something we should all be very, very proud of in the funding for those projects. So that is the end of my report. I do, before I pass it over to our chief administrative officer, want to wish Councilmember Michaux a very happy birthday. Thank you for spending it with us.[1664.26][1664.26][applause] Councilmember Cor has agreed to lead us in a song.
Yes, let's do it, everybody. All right. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Andrea. Happy birthday to you.[1686.71][1686.71][applause]
All right. With that, I am going to pass it over to Pat Fitzpatrick, our chief administrative officer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I admit I can't talk what just happened, so I'm going to refer to my report that's in the minutes or in the agenda and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, well, we had a workshop this afternoon and the video is available on our website and Facebook. We had two presentations. One was about our budget, having conversation about our budget session that's coming up. And the other one was working on our comp plan, DEIS updates from our amazing staff. And all that is available online and if you have Happy birthday, dear Andrea. Happy birthday to you.
With that, I am going to pass it over to Pat Fitzpatrick, our chief administrative officer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I admit I can't talk what just happened, so I'm going to refer to my report that's in the minutes or in the agenda, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, well, we had a workshop this afternoon, and the video is available on our website and Facebook. We had two presentations. One was about our budget, having conversation about our budget session that's coming up. And the other one was working on our comp plan, DEIS updates from our amazing staff. And all that is available online, and if you have feedback to provide, you can always go on our website at engagekent.gov. I think it's engagekent.gov. I have to look that website up. Sorry. Give me just a second. I thought I had it memorized. So, let me repeat that again. I'm looking at the wrong presentation. On my pen. Thank you. We have these pens. Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. We also had Councilmember Michaux, Councilmember Troutner, and myself on a tour, Taste of Kent Culinary Tour by our known chef, Christina Aroki Asami. We had an amazing lesson on our BIPOC businesses here in Kent and culinary. We visited two businesses on East Hill, Punjabi Bazaar and Fortune Chinese Restaurant. And I'd never been there before, so it was great and learned a lot, and I'd encourage, you know, all of you to be part of that because I think it's amazing. It's part of our lodging tax grant, and it's about putting Kent on the map as we talk about it. So, that was a great tour. I do serve on three regional boards and commissions. I have not had a meeting yet. I do have a Growth Management Planning Council meeting next week, so I'll have updates for that. With that, I'll start with Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam President. I am vice chair of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board, and I serve on that committee along with Councilmember Larmer and Councilmember Boyd. And we had a meeting last Thursday. Just to highlight a few things that happened during that event, or during that meeting, we had a life-saving award, we had some badge pinings and promotions, and then we recognized Chief Carson for his response to the tragic accident that happened in Renton several months ago, but also for his support that was provided to our firefighters in regards to their well-being and mental health from the peer support team. This type of consideration, action, and support is critical for the care and health of our firefighters, and it was really great to recognize him by the peer support team. We also have a CPR event coming up on Saturday, July 13. It is also during Cornucopia Days. It will be at Showers Center on Saturday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It is a CPR awareness and job fair. It is free and open to anyone, so if you are interested in CPR or want to refresh your skills, this is that opportunity. And then I also sit on the Regional Transit Committee, and earlier last week, we toured the Metro Transit Control Center in South Seattle. So, it's kind of the 911 center of Metro where everything happens. If a bus breaks down or a driver needs assistance, they call into this center. So, it was pretty fascinating to see how that all works, and also to know during a snow event, that is where all of those decisions are made on keeping our public safe during an event like that. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Councilmember Michaux.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for wishing me a happy birthday. There is no place I would rather be tonight. All right. I serve as the subject matter chair for our Committee of the Whole Four Parks and Human Services, and we had two items. The first was that we agreed on a contract for the Canyon Ridge lighting for their sports field, so the city will install, well, this company for the city, will install lighting in return for the city's use of the field after school hours, and they should be installed this summer, so good news. And then our second thing was that we approved a consultant services agreement with Kent Youth and Family Services for an additional school-based mental health professional. All right. And then I also serve on the Human Services Commission as the council liaison. And right now, we are in the middle of the grant selection process. We have about $1.4 million to distribute to service providers. We had more than 150 applications requesting more than $7.3 million in funding, so we have some big decisions to make on Thursday when we are here all day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Michaux. Councilmember Larmer, please.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and that council, that committee met last Friday, unfortunately, it was, well, fortunately, it was my son's eighth-grade promotion ceremony, so I missed the meeting. I will report on the next month's meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmer. Councilmember Boyd.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. I am the chairperson for the Public Safety Committee and chief of the phenomenal job of updating us what's going on in the city of Kent. Also, I sit on PIC, which is part of SCA Public Issue Committee. We have a very brief meeting on last Wednesday. The thing that really stuck out, we were looking at our operation policy, just kind of just how we operate, and then we have a committee that's going to continue to look at that. So, that is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Boyd, please.
Yes, I also sit on the RFA with Councilmember Troutner and Larmer. And what I would like to add is that there's a work group shared by Division Chief Pollak, and he's going to start up a fire ops course for board members and optional guests. So, he, I guess, was telling people on the council to start hitting the gym, which I will. And also, South King Fire has started a Community Assistance, Referral, and Education Service Program with the assistance of the Puget Sound Fire. So, in addition, there would be added to the care program that we already have in South King County, and that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you, Council President. For Public Works, we have an upcoming mini-recycling event that's going to be on June 21st at Russell, at Hogan Park, Hogan at Russell Road Park. And so, you can take all sorts of things. It's free, it's always free. There's a long list of things you can take. You can check our website, which is kentwa.gov/talkingtrash. You can check that out and see which you can take, things that you can't usually put out with your regular recycling. Arts Commission, I'll just remind everybody about the concerts every week, well, between the 10th of July and the end, let's see, around the 21st of August. Opportunities for three concerts a week, all free, different locations, Marl Meadows Park, West Fenwick Park, and Lake Meridian. Almost forgot that one. And Lake Meridian. But anyway, free concerts, wide variety of music, something for young, old, middle-aged, doesn't matter how old you are, that you will find something that will suit your taste. So, just check it out. And then, let's see, that leaves the Mid Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, which will not meet until next week, and the other committee is the for King Conservation District. And KCD will not, or will not meet again until next month, still working on the redistricting. That is it for my committees.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Madam Mayor, as you can see, all of my colleagues are extremely busy, being part of various, various different boards and commissions, as well as serving here in the city of Kent. And we know the saying, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So, I'm glad we are at the table, so, and back to you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is public hearing. We do not have one this evening. That brings us down to public comment. The public comment period is your opportunity to speak to the council and the mayor on issues that relate to the city of Kent or to agenda items the council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using public comment to comment on a ballot measure or any candidate seeking public office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches, but must instead speak to a matter concerning the city or the city council's agenda for upcoming meetings. Speakers must address the mayor and the council as a whole. Remarks intended to target an individual on the dais are not permitted. Finally, please note that this public comment opportunity is for you to provide information to this mayor and the city council that you would like us to consider, but we will not be able to answer questions during the meeting itself. I do have an additional statement, given what I believe many of our speakers are here for tonight regarding the county-controlled Econo Lodge on Central Avenue. The property in question is under the authority and control of King County, which leased the property as a part of a larger property transaction during the COVID-19 emergency. The city of Kent does not own or control the property in question, nor does the city own or control the use of the hotel or adjacent property. If the county were to apply for a permit to use the property, that permit would be processed as it would for any other property owner. King County has not applied for a permit to utilize the property. Finally, the current immigration issues are of national and statewide concern. Cities are prohibited by law from regulating matters of immigration and therefore not equipped to address the immigration issues currently confronting them. Neither South King County cities or King County have the resources to address these issues. It is appropriate for the federal government to step in and resolve these issues, and in the absence of the federal government, it is up to the state of Washington to step in. South King County cities and the county recently met with Governor Inslee last week and asked the state's response to this issue be spread across the entire state and not concentrated in South King County. We met with mayors from approximately nine cities last week with the governor regarding the plan for the money set aside by the legislature, with the response from the state being that that money will be available sometime in August or September of this year, depending on how long it takes them to get through their RFP process. So, with that, Kim, if you could call our speakers, I would note that we have two minutes allocated per speaker. That does include time for translation. If you could come to the podium when your name is called, there will be a timer on the screen, and if you could state your name and city of residence for the record. Kim, could you please call our first speakers?
Thank you. I have Asha Fips, followed by Peter Kuhl, followed by Mui Nasur.
My name is Asha Fips. Dear council members, I'm here today to put a comment of the public. Public is requesting that the city of Kent allocate a permit for the Econo Lodge, the Econo Lodge for the asylum seekers. We have over 600 people currently sleeping outside, including women, children, and pregnant mothers. Over that, we also have 100, over 100 people unhoused, and they're living right next to the Econo Lodge. So, we do understand, the public do understand that the city doesn't have the capacity or doesn't own the building, but at least we're requesting that the city issues a permit to allow asylum seekers to shelter right now because it's unused, it's empty. And they can use it at least for the matter of being until the state figure out what to do and how to find them a place to live.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Peter Kuhl, followed by Mui Nasur, followed by Gwen Allen Carston.
I'm Mayor Dunn and city council members. Thank you all. My name is Peter Kuhl. I'm a president of Drives Union in Washington State. I'm here today asking my city. I lived here in Kent for a long time, almost 15 years. I'm asking you to help our people who are staying outside. I think we feel the pain of children, the pain of pregnant women, and the pain of all the people who are staying outside. We're asking you to help give a permit to the King County so that those people can have a home and is living. In the meantime, it will give them, help them emotionally so that they can go and find jobs. Having a job is very important. Many people have come to America because of two things. Something for their family, and another thing is insecurity in where they come from. All those people, they have come here, they are our people. We are all human. I'm asking you all to help allow King County to have a permit so that those people can have a home. This is very important for all of us. It's not just me alone. I know all of you feeling the pain of having children outside. This is, these are people, and these are human life. We are all equal in front of God. We're asking you to help them have a home where they can live, and thank you so much.
Next speaker is Mui Nasur, followed by Gwen Allen Carston, followed by Dr. Suzine Pak-Gorstein.
And I would ask that you please hold your applause so that Kim can call the speakers, and we can make sure that everybody gets their time to speak.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the entire Kent City Council. My name is Mui Nasur. I've lived in Kent since 2016, and I am here to just kind of second and third what everybody else has spoken here, asking King County to open Econo Lodge Hotel to be used as an emergency housing for asylum seekers. In Kent here, over 100 immigrants, including 80 children, have been staying at the private Kent Quality Inn for the last few months, and have begun settling in their new community, enrolling their children in the Kent School District, finding daycare, and finding employment on granted work authorizations. However, as funds run out to pay for their rooms, they have been forced to live outside in an encampment next to the Econo Lodge. They want to work to support themselves and live independently. They need a stable place to live, and we must put an end to their rolling eviction. Many families with very young children and toddlers, and some are pregnant mothers. So, we're appealing to you to help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gwen Allen Carston, followed by Dr. Suzine Pak-Gorstein, followed by Dr. Tilia Heim-Harb.
All righty then. I'm here again, but I'm here as a resident and a citizen in the city of Kent. I live out of East Hill, and I've been up there since 2004. And I simply just wanted to say thank you for the work that's being done to bring about a good solution to the situation that we have encountered. And I know that the process will get done, and I also know that in order for us to have progress, in order for us to have humanity in action, we need to make sure that we are, I would suggest, that we kind of put ourselves in the place of those who are going through this struggle. There's a verse in the Bible, I'm not quoting it, I don't, it speaks to, "There but by the grace of God go I." So, if I put myself in that situation or whatever's going on, I would want those who are concerned to do as much as they can to make the situation better. And so, as a person, as personally as I can, I'm looking to do whatever I can to help in whatever area available, and to help serve and do the things that we have been raised to do in my family. When there's a need, we step up and we try to make it happen. So, again, I just want to encourage those who are looking to help to make sure that you're doing it for the right reasons. Our old good friend Charmaine would say, "Do the right thing." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dr. Suzine, I think, Pak-Gorstein, followed by Dr. Tilia Heim-Harb, followed by Alexander Jimenez.
Hi. I am a pediatrician from Harborview and at Seattle Children's Hospital. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I've trained plenty of pediatric residents who work at the Kent Moyne's Clinic and have taken care of plenty of Kent youth. I'm actually on call right now at Harborview, where I do pediatric trauma. And so, I just want, I'm here to bring awareness of the situation of these vulnerable families where, in Kent, next to the vacant Econo Lodge. I work with a team of volunteer health professionals, and we carry out rapid health assessments, and we've done two here. Our focus has been on, in doing these rapid health assessments through CTAC and Taquilla and Seattle, have been on these asylum-seeking children and families. I have a detailed report, if you would like upon request. In this particular site, we noticed about 150-plus individuals with many, many infants and children, and living in 93 tents is what we have estimated. We do qualitative, not quantitative, assessments, and it is very alarming of all the sites that we have assessed, and this particular one, we have mothers with five-month-old children, child from Angola, talking about how they're going to take care of their five other children, a mother with a two-year-old girl who's the youngest of six children from Angola, all with horrible coughs, a 10-year-old girl who is suffering from really bad gastrointestinal symptoms after eating food. symptoms after eating food that they had prepared on-site. The local community has been amazing. The clinics have been very supportive, and we came in there thinking, should we get a vaccine clinic, should we get a mobile clinic? But upon our assessments, they really need emergency housing. And so I really plead with you to please use your kind hearts, and we will certainly continue our advocacy with King County Public Health and King County Government to, it sounds like we got to have them submit a permit. But I think I'm very confident that you'll do the right thing, knowing that the Kent community at Kent has such a big heart. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Talia Heim Harb, followed by Alexander Jimenez, followed by Casmiro Pedro.
Hi. My name's Talia Himmelfarb. I'm an infectious disease doctor in King County and a resident of King County, and I'm here to offer my perspective based on my expertise. So I have visited the encampment outside the Econo Lodge several times, along with Dr. Pak Gorstein, and noticed the same things that she did, including many infants and children living unsheltered, exposed to the elements. And so these conditions threaten the health of both these asylum seekers who have already suffered immeasurably, and the public at large. So the people exposed to these elements, including, include infants and people with immunocompromising conditions such as sickle cell disease. Sanitation is achieved only by donation-based support by mutual aid organizations, and as wonderful as it is, it's still inadequate, and puts people at risk of respiratory viral infections and gastrointestinal infections, which we've already seen. Many of the people in this encampment are from areas of high prevalence of tuberculosis, including Angola and Congo. So far, we haven't seen any tuberculosis, but if there was to be a tuberculosis case, this congregate setting with inadequate housing would increase the risk of spread to many, many of these vulnerable people, and make a contact tracing investigation very cumbersome. So we all know that safe housing is a critical aspect of human health, but especially so in this case. Each day that passes in these conditions increases the risk of a devastating outbreak. As somebody that witnesses every day the harms that infections cause, I ask you to do whatever you can to expedite opening the Econo Lodge to these people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alexander Jimenez, followed by Casmiro Pedro, followed by Tiffany Brinkley.
We don't. Unless one was requested prior, I don't, which I do not believe one was.
So before we start, I was wondering if I could show you some images, because I feel like sometimes words cannot express the reality that we're currently living.
We were not set up for any sort of audiovisual displays or anything like that. If you'd like to submit something to the clerk, she can share it with the council at a later date.
Thank you. We're coming from communities from Venezuela, Congo, and Angola. We have been camping for more than three weeks next to the Econo Lodge in the city of Kent. And we're coming back here to ask you to please expedite the process so that the hotel can be opened. There are several families, several children that wanted to make it here today, but we didn't have transportation to bring them so that they could talk to you. So I ask you to please expedite the efforts that you're currently working on so that we can have a solution. I feel like the city of Kent is a beautiful city, and we don't, we shouldn't have that encampment. It doesn't look good. It looks really ugly, and several folks have already named that, and some, a lot of folks have told us that they wish the hotel will be opened.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Casmiro Pedro, followed by Tiffany Brinkley, followed by Dombele Francisco.
I am going to ask one last time, please hold the applause so that we can hear the clerk call the speakers.
Good evening, first lady. Yeah, I'm the one from Angola, and I came to crying in the front of her parents' argument to help us someplace for sleeping. We are sleeping outside during three weeks, outside in the campments, and we need for starting more again because we have no place we can go for school. And we came to crying in the front of father and mothers. Can clean our tears because we have no way to go. We need your help, please try to help us. We are the children. We bring some knowledge, but we have no place to put this knowledge, and we need one table we can put everything interesting we need to do in American countries. We bring some more things interesting. We can make, to put our knowledge up more, and we haven't any place for sleeping. We are sleeping in the campments every day with the children. The rain is come to make us confused there that side, and we need, you can help us to happen, the Econo Lodge hotels. If God can bless, if father and mother, you are there in front, try to clean our tears, please. We need your help. We have no way we can go to crying more again outside. That way again, we just came now again to calling your presence here again to help us to put our hope up also. Since we left our parents, the country are from, is so far, and we need to participate in intelligence things here, just bringing again to win some things here again interesting. The mothers, fathers is there to do some things interesting in our project we have to do in America, because we have no place for sleeping. That's why we need your help. Try to clean, wipe our tears, please. There are things we came to say. You can help us to clean these tears we have. I know God will never forget the good things he want to do for us. God will bless you to help you and I to win some things interesting in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tiffany Brinkley, followed by Dombele Francisco, followed by John Grant.
All right. Good evening to the council. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Tiffany Brinkley. I am a business owner in the Washington area, also live in Seattle, but I own property throughout the Puget Sound. And I also want to comment on the sentiment about supporting permitting for property use to get people homed as soon as possible. I know that's one issue that I've been having in the areas that I own property is simply just getting permitting. You know, I'm not a big-name player to be able to offer housing, but at least for a few families to just be able to put some folks on a piece of property. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. The other thing that is really alarming to me and concerning is, you know, I've been around for over 40 years now. I've been watching immigration and refugees coming in and out of the country for my whole life, but it feels like this is the first time in my life that I've been seeing the resources coming to the people so slowly. It's alarming how many people are out on the streets, and it seems like the first time I've ever seen this happening, and they look like me. So I just want to encourage all of you guys, for whatever influence you have, for the committees you guys are on, to ensure that the money that's being put forth for the refugee immigrant communities are being fairly appropriated, because there's people coming from all over the world, but why are they only really out there struggling from specific nations? So I just want to make sure that our humanitarian efforts are sound and fair, and that we're giving people the resources they need as soon as possible, no matter where they come from. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dombele Francisco, followed by John Grant, followed by Janata Lutumba.
Good night, everyone. My name is Francisco Dombele. I have asked you for help more than once. We have been at the encampment for more than three weeks. But our lives are, we're risking our lives by being there. One night, what happened at the front? Do we have any Portuguese? Because I, I'm trying, but I'm not very fluent in Portuguese. No? Okay. Well, what I'm understanding is that he's saying like something happened next to his tents. So our children were playing ball. But the ball went away. Thank God the car was not speeding. And that's why we're asking for help. Because we're running a lot of risks. But we don't have anywhere to go. Can you imagine what if someone dies? Where will we go? So we're asking you for several favors. And more than once, we have asked you for this favor. Help us. At least for us to have a place to put down our heads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Grant, followed by Janata Lutumba, followed by Jean Jacques Kayamba.
Greetings, Mayor Ralph, and city council members. My name is John Grant, the chief strategy officer with the Low Income Housing Institute. Lehigh has over 30 years of experience in nonprofit housing development, including renovating hotels to be used for emergency shelter. I'd like to thank council president Seth Wenderkohr for meeting with committee members to discuss what we can do to support asylum seekers in the city of Kent. It's clear that this is a regional issue that cannot fall on one city alone. We agree Kent needs help. On that note, I wanted to provide an update on our work since we last met in April. In partnership with the Refugee Women's Alliance, our organizations moved swiftly to house and shelter asylum seekers who were ejected from the Kent Quality Inn in early May. In the span of 48 hours, we moved 105 asylum seekers into one of our properties in Tacoma, which has included 65 children and six pregnant mothers. This is why the Kent encampment is not 300 people. We additionally moved 17 more families into our John Fox Place Apartments in Seattle. We are doing our part to ensure that Kent is not alone in responding to this urgent need. Given this progress, we encourage the city to issue a permit to open the Econo Lodge Hotel. REWA and Lehigh are recipients of the RFP issued by King County to assist asylum seekers. The resources currently exist to move forward with permitting the building. We're willing to offer our expertise and support in any way possible. We can help get the building up to code. There are many buy-in for immigrant-led organizations who want to provide culturally relevant services to their community, and this would enable that. It's clear that King County needs to request a permit, and we encourage you to approve that permit should it be requested. Kent clearly needs more support to provide humanitarian aid. It cannot just be left, the city cannot be left alone, and we stand by you and offering whatever support we can to help asylum seekers get secure housing and shelter. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next speaker is Janata Lutumba, followed by Jean Jacques Kayamba.
Good night. My name is Jonathan Lutumba. I'm an asylum seeker who's currently camping in front of the Econo Lodge. I would like to name some of the risks that we're currently facing while we are there. Last week on... On Friday. There were several people who were threatening us, and they didn't have a reason to do that. They were threatening us, and they said that they were going to come back with firearms within an hour. We are, where we're staying, we have families, we have just regular folks, but still we had folks coming to us, telling us and threatening us that they were going to come back with firearms. We have already suffered this type of persecutions in our home countries. And I will say that you should help us, because the law says that no one should go without a place to sleep. We're being threatened for asking for housing, and that's very unfair. Please try to help us.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Jean Jacques Kayamba.
Good evening, mayor and council member. My name is Jean Jacques Kayambi. I am working at Harborview, and I am a public health professional. I've been involved in this crisis since last year with many Congolese descent living in Kent, and we tried to provide support and cultural and language access to different services coming to our newest community. But now we are concerned because as we come to the summertime, there is a risk of footborne and enteric disease, and I have been managing COVID response for the past year in a college, and it was really hard to do contact tracing if there was a case. So in the situation with those people living in this really humane condition, if an outbreak of a disease breakouts, we are concerned that that can spread quickly and not only affecting people living in those condition, but also all citizens around Kent. We are glad that Kent over provides space for those people, but we also asking you if you can support and push for to open a college so we can have those people in a safe place, and our different organization helping this community be able to provide the services they need, because if you do anything, if an outbreak happen, those people, not only those refugees will be affected, but also citizens of Kent will be affected. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more public speakers, mayor. Thank you, Kim. All right, that ends our public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar. It's a compilation of items that the council has considered over their last several committee of the whole meetings, and they've had an opportunity to discuss these issues with staff, and have their questions answered. They've passed out of that committee without controversy. Looks like tonight we have consent calendar items A through K. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Brings us down to our next item, other business. We do not have any, nor do we have any bids this evening. We also do not have an executive session, so that brings us to the bottom of the agenda. I would like to remind everyone that tomorrow, city offices will be closed in celebration of Juneteenth. We will open again on Thursday. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.